So I'm gonna call this meeting to an order. We do have a quorum. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees in Weatherford College. Today's Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It is two P M. We're in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located at two twenty-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act on the posted agenda. Now that we're called to war, I would ask Mr. Baker, can you give the invocation for us, please?
Be happy to, sir. What about with me? Well, it seems like yesterday we were thanking you for the upcoming graduation and the spring weather, and here we are again. And thank you for the year you've given us. Thank you for all the students. Please keep them safe and allow them to finish strong, along with our faculty and staff, as we celebrate them and their achievements. Please be with this board as they deliberate. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Let's rise now. Leeson's pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you much. Please be seated. Ms. Worley, no one's signed up for the public comment. So we'll move to Agenda Item Number Three, President's Report. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions and employee notices. Recognizations. Weatherford College has officially signed our institution's first four-plus-one agreement with Our Lady of the Lake University. Mr. Mike Indy and Dr. Philip Mathieu were instrumental in negotiating the agreement. W C students may now complete a Bachelor of Applied Arts and Sciences in organizational leadership and an M B A in a total of five years without ever leaving W C. Additional four-plus-one agreements are currently being negotiated with Texas Westland University, Tarleton State University, Lynn University, and New England College. Under the leadership of Vance Christie and a small army of volunteers, W C recently hosted a dynamic agricultural competition. Thank you to everyone who welcomed the three thousand one hundred nineteen F F A students from one hundred and eighty-three chapters from across the state. Many of these students will select W C as their college of choice. Great job. The W C softball and baseball teams are off to a great start this spring. Both teams are nationally ranked. W C athletics continues to demonstrate excellence both on the competition surfaces and in the classrooms. Go Coyotes! Employee notices. D M A C Local requires that the college president provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Janetta Cruz, the Dean of Workforce and Technical Education, has resigned effective four-seven-twenty-three. Nikki Harless, Director of Financial Aid, resigned effective four-thirteen-twenty-three. Lori Morris, Library Services Clerk, has resigned effective four-twenty-one-twenty-three. Melissa Massey, Nursing Instructor, has resigned effective five-five-twenty-three. Ernie Gallegos, a Testing Assistant in the Testing Center, has resigned effective six-one-twenty-three. Adewun Oshiyoye has resigned from his Economics Instructor position effective eight-eighteen-twenty-three. Lauren Tidwell, an Instructor in Biology, has resigned effective eight-eighteen-twenty-three. And Pauline Jones, Radiology Technician Instructor, has resigned eight-thirty-one-twenty-three. We thank Janetta, Nikki, Lori, Melissa, Ernie, Adewin, Lauren, and Pauline for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, President Farmer. Are there any questions or comments about this report? If not, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. What I'd like to do is see if there's a motion on A, B, D, and E and pull C out and just get a little information on that. So is there a motion to approve Consent Agenda Financial Reports, Consent Agenda and Financial Reports, A, B, D, and E? Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. So let's pull C out. Comprehensive Fully Integrated Assessment Student Success System for Data Collection and Analytics. There's been some information inserted into our information today. So can you kind of run that down to us? Whoever needs to do that, Dr. Farmer, whoever?
Sure. There are several different departments involved in this, including Student Services, including the technology, which reports through Dr. Cantrell. But ultimately, John Jones has driven this process of requesting this, going through Mr. Curly's office. And each of you are welcome to chime in. Mr. Curly, would you mind kind of taking the lead on the watermark proposal?
It's a very comprehensive proposition that will support our various programs, student assessments, faculty access to information, several other ones. You probably got some of those too, and I'm not picking the other one.
Well, and the institutional research side of the house is something.
Okay.
And it's what we have done is the vendor has provided a very broad band of services and is integrated and it also can be integrated in our current I T system. It's a five-year contract, and it'll create some continuity and some rationality to the information gathering and information dissemination of the contract.
I see it's gonna be in five installments as far as the payments?
Yes.
Five or six? Okay.
Will that replace just some systems we currently have? Is that the plan?
We had another vendor that did similar work, but they weren't very responsive. What they, the suite of software that they had did not really integrate with the systems that have been installed over the last couple of years here. And they didn't get.
Okay.
We put it out. We had one vendor.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve four C?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. We'll move to Agenda Item Five, Consideration Possible Action Stair Handrail Replacement Repair Project. Dr. Cantrell.
We requested proposals on the main concern was the mits building, the staircases on the backside were tearing away from the wall. Dan was concerned about walking into his office a little bit. So we were, those had to be redone. Across the camp at the L A R, one end of my building had to be redone, I believe. I think we had four total. They, we had three bids on those. We had Imperial Construction, J R Jones Construction, and Tarrant County Construction. It was recommended, being recommended after a review by the architect, John Jones and myself, that Tarrant Construction lost the low bid at three hundred and twenty-five thousand sixty dollars. Next was Imperial at four eighty-five thousand and J R Jones at five hundred and fifty thousand. We, once we went back and looked at it, there was an alternate at Coyote Village to go back and do their handrails and all that, but we've decided to pull that one out at this time and we can, think we can do that in-house. It's just mainly standing and painting on that. We do, are recommending that we take in, and that number, unit, price number one also had to do with the Coyote Village that we're going to take care of in-house. Unit price number two, prep and finish railings, that's where it tied into the new staircases, and they're gonna do that. We're recommending we go ahead and utilize that at forty-four thousand five hundred. And then the other unit prices were in case they tore into it and it was more extensive than what we had thought in the beginning on concrete repair, small concrete, repair of concrete cracks, by repairing those with epoxy if any of those are needed. We went back and worked with the Tarrant County Construction. Since this was a proposal, we could go and negotiate with them. We felt like, and it was recommended to us by the architect, that those unit prices were a little high, and so we were able to negotiate that down to the current price that we're showing here today. So overall, we're recommending that we approve the three hundred and twenty-five thousand and the unit price of number two for those, and then the number three and number four if needed.
Okay, all right. Are there any questions or comments about this Agenda Item?
Was that priced in our budget already?
We have money in our major repair rehabilitation that we'll take care of that.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you much. See Dr. eBay up here today. Explain why Dr. eBay's here. I think that's very noteworthy and necessary.
Yes, Dr. eBay has provided some excellent leadership in academic services for many, many years here at Weatherford College, and he is currently serving as the interim Executive Vice President of Academic Services while we conduct a national search for that position. And he, of course, will be welcome to apply for that, but he'll be competing against some very highly qualified applicants, and we are very appreciative of his leadership and his excellent service to the institution.
Dr. eBay, welcome and thank you. All right, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Six, Carter Property Site Development Project. Dr. Cantrell.
When he introduced this to us, we were looking at demolishing the facilities of the Carter Property where Chick-fil-A has purchased, and that was part of the contract. And I may, with questions, refer to Dan in a second. The total base proposal price, we had two companies that bid, Imperial Construction at five hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred, R K Construction, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-nine twenty. So at this time, we, additional cost to complete after, where there was an alternate number one, number two, for, to use after hours and beyond, and we're not choosing to go with those. They should be earliest possible start date would be, I think that's, it was a negotiable date on that, of April twenty-fourth, and total calendar days to complete of eighty-five, because we're recommending to go with a low bid of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred. The contract included that we would take out, we would spend up to three hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred clearing that property. Anything over that would be paid by Chick-fil-A, so the two hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred would be paid by them. So at this time, we're recommending that we employ Imperial Construction to facilitate this demolition. Dan, would you like to add anything?
This has been a long process. I don't know, within a couple of years, we were trying to get all the different pieces aimed together. It was obvious that the, that the cost to prepare the site was very high and likely to be very expensive. My conversations with Chick-fil-A included comments like, it's becoming uneconomic, and we may have to renegotiate this thing. We have to spend many more money for that. And so that's when they put the upset price in the contract that limited our exposure for site preparations to the number you see in this document. So we're ready, ready to get that underway and get it finished.
What's a ten-second comment about what we're having to do in order to prepare?
Say it again.
What's a ten-second comment about what we're having to do to prepare the site?
Well, it's clearing, scrubbing, and stormwater management. The stormwater management turned out to be the trick back. The time the city got through with it, we had to build a retention or detention park, and it was relatively expensive. And we also had to run the sewer from where it's going to enter near B B Fielder all the way across the property through solid limestone. So it mounted up pretty, pretty high to get that underway. But that's, I was grateful to get the upset price that we did while all the work that signed up for.
Thank you. So there's about a forty-five day period that they're gonna be working on as of today? Could we take?
Because of the length of time it took and the long pole and the tent turned out to be the city, because they, they had comments and they redid it and did comments, and they were not exactly, they didn't, the rebound was a little slow. So we will have scope to negotiate a different final date on that. And we will be meshing and coordinating with their contractors who have things to do on that site that will be affected by what we do and when we do it. So all that coordination is gonna require that we rethink the delivery date for landlord's work.
And the Chick-fil-A portion, when did they pay that and what are the circumstances of their payment?
Well, we have not worked out the details of that. My, my approach would be that when we got the bills in from the contractor, when they were due, they would pay whenever it comes time for them to pick up the, the payment process, that they would, they would take the bills and pay them.
Okay. Any questions or comments at this point? You've heard the presentation. Is there a motion to approve?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, that's approved. Thank you for your comments. Sorry to get off, off task a little bit, but moving on. Agenda Item Number Seven, Consideration Possible Action Electric Vehicle Charging Station Site Development Project. Dr. Cantrell.
First of all, this had to do with a grant allocated, awarded by the North Central Texas Council of Governments for two hundred and ninety-five thousand to install charging stations on our properties here. And to comply with the state law, we had to bid these services over fifty thousand. At this time, we had bids from Imperial Construction only, I believe, at a cost of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. But with an additional alternate cost of forty-eight thousand. And so it, I think the award period was pretty short in getting that thing installed, so we have chosen to recommend to go to that shorter installation of two, for two hundred and forty-seven thousand three ninety-two in order to meet the grant date. So for a total, I think also the contractor will install the electric vehicle charging equipment provided by Blink Charging Company, and that's for people to come in and be able to, to charge. And that's a forty-one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, and that was already approved, I believe, on March ninth. Is that correct? For, so to fall under the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar grant.
Is that the same group that just started that one in New York City, that did that big charging session in New York City, I think, under Grand Central? I think they did a grand opening yesterday.
I don't know. I'm not up on that one. Dan might be. That was more in their area that Shannon was in charge of this project.
Blink, the company just did the biggest charging station in New York City, and they just opened it yesterday. I think it was Blink.
No, I didn't see that, but the, the thing that had caused the most consternation is finding the made in America. That all the, even the steel and the smaller parts had to all be all American-made, and finding charging stations that met those qualifications was not easy. And not easy to get them delivered within a restricted timeframe that kept slipping away as we struggled to find vendors. So very, very hard place to get.
So what is the completion date required by the grant? Do you know?
I believe, I believe it was August. She's not here with us today. She was.
It's August first.
Okay, so they've saying by July thirty-one they'll be done? Is that per the contract?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Imperial, you know, has to have signed. They have.
Yep.
So the total cost is two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Of that, I've read this, but I'm still not sure, where does two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars come from?
It comes from that grant, the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar grant.
Okay.
Shannon, speak up if you have anything to add to it.
No cost to Weatherford College.
Correct. It's all covered by the grant.
All covered by the grant.
But we need to approve two ninety-five fifty.
Yes. Two hundred and forty-seven to three hundred and ninety-two dollars, grand total of two forty-seven, three ninety-two.
Our contribution is to the land, right?
All right, that'll be good. Just trying to double check. Any other questions or comments before we vote on this?
I have a brief comment, Mr. Chairman. I would like to acknowledge and recognize Shannon Mello for her efforts in writing this grant. Additionally, we received very strong letters of support from Senator Phil King as well as from Senator Drew Springer. And because of their support and Shannon's work, we had the highest ranked grant application in the competitive process. And so we're very appreciative both of Shannon's hard work and especially appreciative of the support that we've received from our elected officials.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? And so is there a motion that the Board of Trustees award the proposal as presented?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. That's approved. Moving to Agenda Item Number Eight, Reports. President Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have been provided your monthly Academic and Student Services update in detail. Few highlights there that I'll point to is, again, the exciting approval of our Bachelor's Degree in Education and Teaching. We are very, very excited to launch that. I would also mention that Academic Services is very busy moving forward with our four-plus-one articulation agreements as well as additional program applications at the associates level and at the workforce level. So lots of activity going on both in Academic and Student Services. Additionally, moving to Agenda Item Eight-B, our Student Life Update. Student life is critically important. There is a body of research that shows that the more students are engaged in campus life, the more likely they are to be successful in their college experience. And so we've always had a good student life program here, but I've challenged Mr. Jefferson and Mr. Grant Mills to step it up and make it even better and move from good to great, and they've responded to that challenge, and we are certainly moving in the right direction. So at this time, I would invite Mr. Doug Jefferson and Mr. Grant Mills to present to
Good afternoon to all of you. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you with information about Weatherford College's Office of Student Development and Student Life and Development. As you can see, the department has several areas that we cover regarding information. These are the different departments that report through, under Office of Student Development. A few years ago, our office was rebranded as the Office of Student Development and Wellness. It is our desire that students are encouraged to seek holistic development. This includes emotional, mental, spiritual, personal, and even academia. By working toward holistic development, students then feel empowered to maintain these areas of development, which in turn will increase their wellness opportunity. Student life activities, as Dr. President Farmer just mentioned, play a major role in our development and wellness initiative. During every major activity, at least one of the following is highly emphasized. We emphasize personal responsibility, social responsibility, and teamwork. When student life sponsors a dance, personal and social responsibilities are discussed. Give an example, distracted drivers, texting and not being attentive while you're driving. When we host casino night, we emphasize the dangers of drinking and driving, not leaving your beverages while, leaving them unattended. Social and personal responsibilities. We teach them to be concerned about others, and that helps their mindset to become better citizens and the better students. Counselors speak at all these events. Remember, we are better together, not with Brandon, Mr. Grant Mills, who will speak about all the student life activities.
Good afternoon, Doug. Thank you for the introduction, and thank you all half of the students for your thirty-one years of service. It's pretty impressive, and it's an honor to be a part of the last four. So student engagement is on the rise. And by the way, there's also a little handout in front of you. If you might have followed along, that'd be awesome. So a few fun statistics for you. Our general growth might seem astronomical. These percentages might seem out of this world, but it's completely achievable if you have two things. One, I have a passion to innovate. And two, I have a team that is willing to cultivate. And what I mean by that is I'm actually a student, a current student here at Weatherford College in the Bachelor's of Organizational Leadership. And in this past semester, Dr. Philip Mathieu challenged us to learn the abilities to lead change and to cultivate change. And in this past actual month, we've been discussing the idea of a capable champion. And a capable champion is someone in the organization who not only sees a vision but has a network around them that will start, start the growth of the flower and then project outwards. And in my team, I have Melissa Johnson. I have Doug Jefferson. We have Dr. T. and Adam Finley, his entire team. And then beyond that, we have a core group of students. This core group of students, they, they might play softball on Wednesday nights, and they might be in the ping pong room at two o'clock, but they're also on the esports team, and they're also leading in the classroom. And these are our capable champions. So these numbers are large, but our team is larger, and this is just the beginning. So what's new? How are we doing this? So a few fun examples. So we offer Breakfast of Four Books. This event is a community, is a community outreach, really. We bring in local churches and community partners who provide breakfast for our seven-thirty A M. students at Weatherford College. As we all know, it's not fun to wake up in the morning to go to class, but this is a little motivation to help them stay focused in the classroom and also meet a network of individuals who are in the same situation as themselves. Field Night, with the assistance and help with Jeff Lightfoot and Coach Haley Williams, we have access to the Weatherford College softball fields every Wednesday night, and we open it up for three hours. And if you can think of any sport with a ball, we play it. And this event went from ten students to twenty students to thirty students, and we're averaging over a hundred and twenty students right now on Wednesday night. Considering our dorms are half of that, it's pretty awesome, or double. Free hot chocolate lemonade stands, international hangouts. So our international hangout, as you're all aware, we represent various countries here at Weatherford College. And this is a community that meets once a month. They're led by international students, and this network is, it creates a place for them to share their culture, to share their background, what they stand for, what they believe in. And it's a great place for other students to come in and talk to them and kind of interact. Our First Serve Cookout. Not much to it. It's a cookout, but it was to represent our phenomenal first-year volleyball team. Coyote Competition Day and Home Run Derby. So I've only worked here roughly two years. I was a student here two years before that. Coyote Competition Day and Home Run Derby. So I've only worked here roughly two years. I was a student here two years before that. But if there's one word that represents Weatherford College, it's the word compete. And we compete in the classroom. We compete on the baseball field. We compete on the basketball court and we're good at it. So sometimes it's fun to do an internal competition. And to give you an idea, I believe this home run derby is going to be the new pinnacle of student life. We had over, we almost had 300 students, faculty, staff, and community members come out. We got to the softball field and we allowed one representative of each athletic program to come together along with three faculty members. And we competed at the softball field in a home run derby. This event was free hot dogs, free access. It was free for all to enjoy. But you saw the community come together. We had people pulling off the side of the street just to stop by because they saw that something was happening. So it's very impressive. And then the City of Weatherford coed softball league. This is probably my favorite. I'm a coach of 12 athletes. We have six women, six men, and we compete weekly. We have been competing for the last six weeks against 15 of the City of Weatherford coed softball teams. And we are currently sixth place and we qualify for the playoff tournament on the 28th. So if you have nothing going on, come enjoy us. And esports. As we're all aware, esports are making their way in today's youth and adolescents and the college generation. So the infamous DOSH room located in the DOSH Student Center is aka the esports arena. They compete on Wednesdays from 1:30 to 4:00. And this group is actually competing statewide. They've traveled to three different tournaments in Arlington and Granbury, and I forgot the third. But they compete against other local schools and it's a good representation of our campus. Also, within our department, I have the privilege of working alongside J.C. Edwards. And we oversee the Weatherford College Student Ambassador Program. These are 12 students of Weatherford College finest. And we lead the next generation of coyotes. It's important to focus on today's students, but it's almost more important to focus on the future student. So with J.C.'s help and with what we lead here, we, in 2020, from the spring of 2022 to the spring of 2023, we estimated 766 individual and family tours and over 1,800 group tours. These are local schools, local, all the little groups that come by to have a new coyote in the next year. So the growth is healthy, but how can we sustain it? Like I said earlier, this is just the beginning. I started this as my year one and we are excited for year two. I have dug for a few more years and we're going to utilize it. So with the assistance of the coyote, Brent Baker, and Dave Cowley, we are going to begin the Weatherford College Student Life Podcast. This will be a student-driven podcast with me as the host. Next, with the assistance of Linda Hutton and Adam Finley in Department of Student Services, we are going to revolutionize the way our group tours and individual tours are getting booked through the new recruit system. Right now, it is a phone call and an email and 12 students trying to coordinate a group of 300. So we're going to make this online now and try to cut out the middleman. And we're going to continue to encourage and cultivate a student-led campus. That's hard to do. But with the support and that core capable champion core group, I believe it's, I believe it's completely possible. And with y'all's support, we'd love to, we'd love to maintain it. And then on the very back attached to your packet, you'll see a free meal card. So go ahead and skip to the back. And this meal card, this really was, it was an on-the-fly idea that Doug and I saw as a need. But our office, if you're not aware, we're office in the cafeteria. And we see students countless times each week through counseling sessions, through just being in the cafeteria, through our group tours, who may not have the accessibility to get a meal. So with the assistance of Brent Baker and the Weatherford College Foundation, we have partnered up and created the free meal card where we give out to the students who might need one, to get one free meal. And it charges the foundation and it's a good use of our money to ensure our students are taken care of. And the last slide, it's very easy to brag on yourself and it's easy to brag on how good Doug looks today in that suit. But sometimes it's really good to understand that the student's perspective is what matters the most. I challenge y'all to walk through our campus and I challenge y'all to talk to a second-year student and see the growth from year one to year two. And you can take this home and read these, but that's my challenge for y'all as well. That's my presentation. And now the floor is open for any questions you may have.
Question?
Yes, sir.
My question is to Dean McCollum.
Yes, sir.
How much does this touch the campus down in Wise County? How much does, what he's been going over, how much of that touches that campus?
They offer the counseling services to our students as well. And Doug has come out and met with some of our students. You know, they do telephone sessions or Zoom sessions. They donated a disc golf set to us, which we installed in the back. And whenever we need something, we do give a call and then try to get activities and ideas from them and work together the best we can.
I'd say add to that, we also provide a food if they need it, like from the food pantry, we deliver food. She came and got some food, so we make sure the students who need food, could pick me up, they have food there as well.
My second part, my second question is to you, is how do you appraise or how do you evaluate this program? What mechanisms of evaluation do you have for this program?
For the statistics?
For this program in general, how much is it, how do you know how much it's really affecting the average student? How do you know?
A lot of it comes from the graduates participation. Then we hold a lot of students. We're tracking numbers. We're working on that now. But a lot of the students continue contacting us who graduated and left, went to other schools. A lot of them will say that we do more here than they do at the university that they're attending. So what we're in the process now of getting numbers, my secretary is doing that now so that we can compile all of his numbers and get that. We could have the numbers for you all.
So you, there is an empirical side to it.
Yes, we're working on that.
You're not there yet. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're working on that because it's a new endeavor right after COVID, but we are working on that, yes, sir.
And how, how long do you think that'll be for you?
That's a good question. We should have it, we're working now like with housing. There's a lot of complications going on with that. So we're diverse into a lot of different aspects, but as soon as we get everything straight out of our housing, then we will come back and we can start it. And hopefully within the next year, we should have it. Six months to a year, we should have that numbers for you.
Will the new software for research include student activities and things like that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Could you get us to sign up and that way maybe follow up with them? You know, did this impact you and stuff like that to answer his question?
Yeah.
That's what we do when we have big events. We have people sign up and we just send them a quick.
Little survey afterwards.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
Well, we do have survey.
But that gets interaction. I have a question about the meal card.
Yes, ma'am.
We've done a lot of studies on my campus or through my corporation about the word free, and I know it's a very minor point. But instead of free, could you maybe refer to it as with compliments of the Weatherford Foundation or sponsored by? Instead of just, just changing the terminology a little bit, it gives a little bit more merit.
Yes, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for the time.
Home run derby?
Yes, sir.
Baseball, softball?
It is a softball with baseball bats. So it's a little bit of both. Yes, sir. And it's underhand.
In baseball and softball, players cannot participate in it. They're just out in the outfield, getting involved and throwing the ball to the pitcher.
Our baseball and softball teams are the ones working the event. They're doing the concession stand. They're working the field. They're pitching the balls. They're wearing their jerseys. It's a good option. Yep.
Yeah, I'm going to nominate Dr. Marlett.
I think that's a great idea.
Marlett, will you do that?
Do what?
Let go for y'all's time.
Really nice presentation.
Whatever it was.
Whatever it was. Whatever you ask of me.
Can I say one last thing?
Please.
With the student activities, Dr. T. cannot vouch for this. We've had an increase in the number of students with mental concerns as well as hospitalization. And as we see them, we'll get numbers for this, get them involved with the student activities, whether it be an RA, whether it be an ambassador. Had this one lady called and said that because of our intervention in one with her son, they got him help. He's getting help right now and he is becoming an ambassador at that facility where he is. So by, we would have never found this out if we would not be having the student activities that we can get involved with it, personally involved with the students. And it's really helping them out. So that's one of the main purpose is finding those who are in need and getting there before they get into a serious situation.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson, Mr. Mills. Appreciate it so much. Going back to Agenda Item Number Eight. Academic stu-, I'm sorry, Academics and Student Services Update. Dr. T. and Dr. I. E. Bay.
Yes, sir. They have provided a written report for you. Anything that either of you would like to comment on that?
And we're very proud of the fact that the day one access initiative has significantly improved. We began the pilot program last summer in the fall. I believe 14 or 15 courses. I'm no longer directly involved in that, but for this coming summer and fall, there's now almost 50 courses. And as far as the data shows, we are saving, this program is saving our students, what is it, around 48% of, on textbooks. And the average textbook now is down to about, I think around $70 or so a textbook. The most expensive I've seen is day one is about $100, which is a significant improvement for the students.
Any questions or comments by the board?
I'll echo the day one access. I have two kids that are in dual credit and it's just a fabulous program for these students. And I hope it's available across all of them. Everything eventually. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. There's no action required on Agenda Item Number Eight. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Alright, so we'll move to Agenda Item Number Nine. Future Agenda Items or Meetings. President Farmer? Okay, I'm sorry.
The AAS in Agricultural Business needs to be approved.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Mrs. Dr. E.
Dr. E, thank you.
Was that in the, it was, was that item E in the consent for E?
I think it was in the consent agenda that we approved it.
Yes.
Okay, so we've already approved.
Yep.
On 4E?
Yep.
We approved that.
Do you feel comfortable with that, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So now we'll move to Number Nine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next month, we will be bringing you the preliminary 2023-2024 budget report. I would like to congratulate Dr. Cantrell as well as the just tremendous amount of people involved in the annual budgeting process. It is quite the endeavor and our budgets continue to become increasingly complex. And she and her team are doing a great job of making sure that we stretch our dollars as far as possible.
I have a great team working on that.
Well, you do, but you're a great leader. Thank you. Any other questions or comments about that? We'll go to Agenda Item 10, Announcements. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to hit the high points. There are a ton of events. This is probably our busiest time of the year as you can imagine. Tonight, in this very room, it's all about the music. This is Dwayne Duratt's project where he brings in some phenomenal musicians. And he's going to try something different and have it in this room tonight. So using that piano and a bevy of other instruments. Hope you can come tonight at 7:30. Tomorrow in this room, the Alumni Awards Luncheon. I announced last month our award winners and we hope to have many here in the room tomorrow for that. That starts at 11:30. We have a tribute to jazz composers at the Alcat Fine Arts Center, April the 18th. We have Taste of Parker County next Thursday. This is our Weatherford College Foundation fundraiser, a food tasting event that J.C. Edwards has done a great job putting together. April 21st and 22nd, the Philosophy of Religion and Politics Conference. April 22nd, the Weatherford College International Piano Competition. Our finalists will be performing that day and being adjudicated in the Alcat Fine Arts Center. We have a. What date? April the 22nd. That's a Saturday. Yes, sir. We have a drama on April the 27th and 29th, or through, 27th through the 29th, the Bakai Alcat Fine Arts Center. We're very proud to host the Region Five Baseball Tournament. First time we've ever hosted that tournament at Weatherford College. At Roger Williams Ballpark, May 12th through the 16th. Tremendous opportunity for our community here at Weatherford College. And finally, we just added a few minutes ago, June 1st, the Robert Marlett Home Run Derby.
Alright. Let me just give out Taste of Parker County. Is, are tickets there? We need to buy those before.
We can either, you can buy them before or there.
Okay.
But J.C. can help board members specifically.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments by the board or Dr. Farmer on the upcoming events? Alright, so we're to the point, we're at Agenda Item 11. So we're going to adjourn the public meeting at this time and we'll reopen in the closed session in about five minutes. Thank you very much. and we'll reopen in the closed session in about five minutes. Thank you very much.
The time is almost five minutes after four and so we've completed our close session. And at this time, we will reconvene in the public session. And that puts us to agenda item number 12. And there are no items or action needing consideration. And we'll move to 13, same thing. There's no consideration or possible action on those items as stated. We'll move to agenda item number 14. And I'll ask, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Raise your right hand. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Wait, hold on, Senate.